This is my to-do list, give you the... that's what I gotta get done.[6.52][6.52](laughing) That's... I'm not... twenty-six. I want twenty-six. Which one? Okay. I've only got twenty-six to-dos, and it keeps growing.
(inaudible)
I'm not making stuff. Can you read it? I get a couple of... I can read this.
Absolutely. I just saw him down at Kelly's.
It's not twenty hours a week, Coach.
Oh, I know.
It is not twenty hours a week.
I had my sup... I was having my sup, I said, "Bring the signs up." Ready?
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for April 5th, 2018. Please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Okay, opening comments. Mr. Taylor?
I'm fine, thank you.
Richie?
I... I just... we need to send a letter to the Sheriff Department for sending down the prisoners. They did a great job along with the contract that we hired to clean up the town. They did a great job. The golf course is amazed in a week... in a week's time, as well as open up the end of Willow Road, and doing the rest of the area, Tudor Beach, Foxo, Council. They did a great job, Jerry.
Yeah, just to ha... no... the letter will go, but just so you know, on Tuesday, I was with Sheriff... Sheriff Carpenter.
Yep.
I personally thanked him on behalf of the town.
Yeah, we gotta send them a letter.
I'll get the letter.
On behalf of the town, the Board of Selectmen.
Yep.
I so moved that, Mr. Chairman, that we sent a letter to Sheriff Carpenter, so to thank him.
Second. Okay, Mr. Taylor seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, I wanna thank... personally, I wanna thank Timmy, Bobby Dwyer, and Chief Feinberg on the fine job that they did with, um... for the Nahand Public Schools, because we got a couple of letters here from Superintendent Pierrentozzi, and he's saying, "Please accept my sincere thank you on behalf of the Nahand School Committee for all the support and work you and your staff do to keep our students, staff, and community safe. The weather and other occurrences of Nahand... in Nahand have been enormously challenging this year. You and your staff have worked tirelessly and diligently to support the educational process at the Johnson American, uh, yeah, Johnson Elementary School. Residents of Nahand are indeed fortunate to have you and your departments working for them. Please share the school committee's appreciation with the members of your department. In addition, please pass on my personal thank you. Sincerely, Tony Pierrentozzi, Superintendent." So, that's all I have. Now, we need to go into the minutes. Approval of the minutes for 3:15-18, 3:26-18, and the executive session minutes of 3:26-18.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the minutes of 3:15-18, 3:26-18, and the executive session minutes of 3:26-18.
Second the motion.
Okay, um, discussion? They look okay for you guys?
Discussion is... these minutes are right on. I thought they were perfect.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion carries, which brings us now to the Citizens Forum. We have one or two people here tonight, so...[231.15][231.15](laughing) Please, come right up.
Thank you.
Christoph Wald is gonna speak on behalf of the I Love Nahand Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Barilla, and Selectmen Taylor and Lombard, thanks for the opportunity. My name is Chris Wald of Tuscaloosa Road here in Nahand, and I'm a member of the Coordinating Committee of the Keep Nahand Wild Movement, and I'm speaking on behalf of the movement. We thought it would be helpful to update you and the citizens of Nahand on our movement, its organization, recent developments, which we believe are important for you to know about. You may all vividly remember the Board of Selectmen meeting here with representatives from Northeastern University and a few hundred Anamitans Nahanders, which expressed their opposition to the stated expansion plans of Northeastern University at East Point, as did you, the Selectmen. Subsequently, a couple of dozen residents initially came together to address and prevent Northeastern's proposed expansion under the name of Keep Nahand Wild, which is a grassroots citizens' movement. Let me cite the mission of Keep Nahand Wild for the record. Keep Nahand Wild is a movement committed to the conservation of Nahand's open space, marine and wildlife habitats, natural resources, conservation areas, and scenic landscapes now and into the future. The Keep Nahand Wild Movement has been organized as a division or part of the Nahand Preservation Trust, an all-volunteer, nonprofit, 501(c)(3) qualified charitable organization, whose mission, just like that of Keep Nahand Wild, is to preserve our scenic landscapes, open spaces, historically significant properties, and conservation lands. We then established a five-person coordinating committee, also members of the Board of Nahand Preservation Trust, who was supported by sixteen working team leaders to manage over one hundred volunteers, and we're incredibly grateful for the support and engagement of all Nahand citizens, many of whom are here tonight. We have advisors from the Nahand Preservation Trust, and we have a liaison to the Board of Selectmen. So far, Mark Cullen has served that role. We're actually very proud to say that we have saved... we have raised over $100,000 in under two weeks from a large number of contributors from all around town recently. There are many signs around town which express our peaceful, yet determined attitude towards any expansion plans of Northeastern on East Point. Importantly, we're not opposed to Northeastern or signs in general, or to the Marine Science Center and its current footprint. In order to express our opinion to the leadership of Northeastern University, we recently crafted an open letter to the President and the Board of Trustees of the university, which I would like to share with you for the record. This is a letter to the President and Board of Trustees of Northeastern University. "We, the undersigned concerned citizens of Nahand, the smallest town in the Commonwealth, respectfully request that Northeastern University reconsider their plans for building a 60,000-square-foot dry office and research facility, as well as related facilities at East Point, and conduct in-depth, independent research on the impact of the current seawater pumping system on marine life and the environment before proceeding with modifications to that system to increase pumping capacity. The plans to build a 60,000-square-foot building at East Point came as a shock to the people of Nahand. Our goal is to preserve East Point as the conservation area it is today. East Point is jointly occupied by the Marine Science Center on land owned by Northeastern University and by the town of Nahand's Lodge Park. Natural beauty, geological wonders, abundant wildlife, flora and fauna thrive in this exceptional environment and know no boundaries. It is not difficult to imagine the impact of a 60,000-square-foot building, no matter how skillfully designed, on this unique, natural environment. It would be devastating. We have no opposition to scientific research nor to educational endeavors. Northeastern has enjoyed tax-exempt status in Nahand for some fifty years. We do object to a building that is grossly out of scale being constructed in a zoned natural resource area. We do object to the loss of open space, to the disregard for an environmentally rich and sensitive area. We do object to the traffic and parking needs of two-hundred-odd occupants of this facility, to the demands on our already overburdened water and sewer systems, our roadways, and our public safety. We assert that this structure, which we are told to be an extension of the Center for Urban Coastal Sustainability, can be built on a less sensitive site and in an area that would benefit by such location. While the MIPA application to quintuple the volume of seawater now pumped by the Marine Science Center was recently withdrawn by Northeastern in the face of local opposition, we are told that a subsequent filing is imminent. We believe that any changes to the seawater pumping system should only be considered after careful study of the impact on nearby marine life and the fisheries that provide livelihood to local fishermen. We then, the signatories below, citizens of Nahand, request Northeastern University to locate this facility to another place, leaving East Point in its natural condition. Over the past ten days or so, outreach volunteers have worked tirelessly to collect signatures in support of this open letter. I'm very proud to report that to date we have collected over fifteen hundred signatures, and the campaign is ongoing through Saturday morning, and we hope that all of you had a chance to sign it yet. We urge those Nahanders who oppose the expansion to sign on to the open letter. Volunteers are available at the Coast Guard Station during the evening commute hours and on Saturday morning. We plan to deliver this open letter to the leaders of the university next week prior to their board meeting. The amazing result of support to date underscores the overwhelming support of the citizens of Nahand in opposition of any expansion of Northeastern at East Point. We urge the citizens of Nahand to come to Town Hall Meeting at the end of April and vote in support of an important amendment to the zoning bylaws which would introduce a level of wetlands protection that is common in other Massachusetts towns and would help to protect East Point. We're very interested in working with the town and with the Board of Selectmen to devise a permanent solution to this issue, and for now, I told you already, Mark Cullen will continue to serve in the liaison role. Mark's deep experience as the former town administrator and lifelong town resident make him ideally suited for this role. Lastly, I wanna mention three upcoming activities. There's gonna be a 4/17 public information meeting at the Johnson School, as we had before. At 7:00 PM, there's gonna be an Earth Day celebration on Saturday, 4/21. More information will become available on our Facebook site. And then on 4/27, there'll be a Keep Nahand Wild fundraiser at the Nahand Country Club, fifty dollars per person contribution. All proceeds will go to the charity. So, let me pause here and see whether you have any questions, either for myself or for the many representatives of the movement. Thank you.
Can you read off all the names on that petition, please?[701.12][701.12](laughing)
Did you bring a sleeping bag?[704.19][704.19](laughing)
If I... if I may.
(inaudible)
Yeah, I think so.
(inaudible).
I think so, yeah. Go ahead.
Excuse me, if you wanna talk, please talk.
You have to wait, so I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Um, my input to this was, I had, in opening comments, a few things to say about the signs and... but with you people here, obviously, I was going to wait. I signed the petition, I have a sign on my front lawn, I'm a one-hundred percent with you, I've said that from the beginning. My only thing is, it has to be done through the Board of Selectmen, and it has to be understood throughout the town, throughout the whole town, not these people going here and doing this, and these people going... because it's just not a good thing. It has to be a process. I don't even know what that process is yet, but we'll get there, and I'd like to get there with your group, obviously, obviously. So, I'm very happy with what you've done. You've done a great job, you people, as you know. I'm a hundred percent with you. It's just, we have to make sure it comes through us, Board of Selectmen, which I know you're all in, but I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Thank you, that is our intent.
Yes, and you said it, yeah.
Richie? Yeah, I think it's... none of your letter is well-written, very well-written, and I'm very, very pleased to be... I'm gonna make a motion concerning, before that packet is sent out, the Board of Selectmen should take a vote and also write a letter, very similar to that, and, uh, and make sure that the Board of Governors of the Northeast are well-aware that the Board of Selectmen are totally against the expansion program at Northeastern. We cannot allow them to expand that program up.[816.81][816.81](applause) And I just think... I just think the volunteers... I signed that petition, I know I did, my wife had it, and so, and she's been on... and I... I can't tell you enough, I know what it is to stand out in that causeway and wave signs or whatever it is, but the dedication of the committee, the people, the volunteer is just outstanding, and the signs say a lot. I saw it, um, I was down having a quick bite of Kelly's, and I talked to one of your constituents, one of your members, very, very well, and a good guy, and I asked him to bring two signs up here because I believe one TV, and I'd like to see the residents see these two signs, if they haven't seen one already, but I think we need... we need to make sure that we are fully, fully tied together at the hip here. Uh, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions in a minute, Mark, and, um, what we've done to date is we've... of course, we put the zoning bylaw in. We also filed the special... in the town man... town meeting, the annual town meeting, we put a, uh, a, uh, an article in for... to go after Northeastern and to, um, go after that land that's up there, biometric domain. We're gonna file, go after that.
We didn't.
And a lot of people... questions on this, it's gonna cost money, well, you know, we have to get an appraisal, and there's a whole series of things that we've gotta do before we go after that. Now, just to give you some... just some thought... feed for thought, the property's assessed for five million. The property that we're going after, which as you know is the conservation subject of that building, and that's the spot we're going after, biometric domain. Now, how much it's gonna cost, I have no idea, but it's a... it's, I think, with a combination of when they read the article and the warrant, plus the presentation that you're gonna make to the Board of Governors at Northeastern, I think the impact, you know, to get that many signatures and to get that many people on board in this town is huge. The night we had the hearing, the presentation from Northeastern, the number of people that showed up here, I have never, in all my years in the town, have seen anything like it, and you had a lot of people that are really well-spoken, well-educated, and they're really, really, they wanna, you know, this has gone too far. I mean, and I'll be honest with you, I'm all out, it's like, uh, the old Marine Corps motto, "We're gonna get to the top of the hill and plant the flag." We're gonna get up there.[1011.12][1011.12](applause) We're gonna... we're gonna go after them, because I really, I really, really, you know, I'm not... I'm not... I'm not in it for... this is... this is... this is our home, and this has to be... we make sure that we just can't have anyone do anything. It just... it's like taking, uh, it's taking Lodge Park over. Taking... it just can't happen, and we've gotta stop 'em and stop... this is the way we're gonna do it, and my question is, I'd like to find out exactly what you want us to do, or what you perceive, uh, that we can get joined at the hip a little better, and maybe have a four, three, three, four, five members of that... your team join with us and the Board so that we... we can coordinate this together.
Mr. Lombard, if I may.
Yep.
If I may. First of all, there's no article in the warrant. That's out.
What?
No article. There's no article in the... in the warrant.
Somebody shut their phone off, please? That would... I would appreciate that.
Now, we put the article...
No, we didn't.
No article.
There's no article in the warrant.
Why is there no article? We voted for that.
No, we didn't. No, we didn't vote. Let me... let me... Second, wait, let me finish. Go ahead, Tim. Second, on my... on March... March 1st... On March 1st, there was a meeting, and at that meeting, I moved that the Board of Selectmen draft a letter of opposition to the Chairman of the Board of Trustees and the President of Northeastern University. It's part of my process. Because the sound was off, somehow it got unplugged, so it got plugged in, so on the next meeting, I did a fallback and brought it up again. So, that is being worked on, and I'd love to sit down and work with you, Chris, on this. We already have that ready to go. And secondly, I'm going to meet with Town Council to draft a letter to the DEP requesting an environmental audit of the waters around Northeastern. So, that's already been discussed, and I'm sorry you guys didn't hear that, and both Verizon and Comcast were unplugged, so... but now it's official, so that has been done.
Okay, you've already talked to Dan Skrip?
No, I'm gonna talk to Mr. Skrip, but I want... now, I'm gonna meet with Chris, if it's okay.
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, so, listen, I'm gonna remedy this now. I'm gonna entertain a motion, start a committee known as the Northeastern Expansion Committee, to work with Northeastern and the Selectmen, or work with themselves, rather, and the Board of Selectmen, to come back to us with ideas, on, you know, your solutions. I would appoint Mark Cullen, Jeff Musman, Kyle Jenkins, Josh Antrim, and Marsha DeVall to that committee. Do I have...
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I say it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, Richie?
Yeah. What happened to the article that we put, the last article?
Well, let's just work on this first, and we'll get to that. I promise I'll get to that, okay? Can we just talk about this? Just finish it?
Well, I... before I ask... before we vote on this, are those people that... are they present... is this... is this something that you, the team out there, would recommend these individuals to be working with us, Mark?
Well, I... listen, Richie?
Well, no, I... you know, I like to hear from them. I mean, I wanna hear from the people. I wanna hear, because they're the ones, you know, and they have to... they have to be agreement, and those people volunteer their time to meet with the Board.
Okay.
And, uh, and I'd like to know exactly what ideas and suggestions and direction they want us to take. I'm very...
Mark, would you wanna... wanna come up and talk?
Good evening, thank you, um, for the offer, and I think it's something that we should probably pursue. I've been meeting with the interim town administrator on this issue over the last few days, and I think it has a lot of potential. I think before we commit to forming a committee, we should have a full understanding of what the duties and responsibilities of that committee is going to be vis-à-vis the Board of Selectmen. I know that the town... acting town administrator had drafted a, um, an outline of those duties and responsibilities, and I shared those with the Coordinating Committee of Keep Nahand Wild, and I think we were all supportive of those duties and responsibilities. I... I think that the establishment of a committee could very definitely work. There could be other options that are available that you may wanna consider, but maybe the best thing to do is if I, as the liaison for Keep Nahand Wild, could meet with, um, the town administrator to work out some of the details of this, and then come back to the Board and say, you know, "This is... this is the whole package," so that we're not, you know, we're not leaving here saying, you know, "What are we supposed to do, and when are we supposed to report," and all those things. I think that between myself and the town administrator, we could... we could work out a proposal and present to the Board, and I could present to the, um, to the Coordinating Committee, and I think we could be in agreement with that.
Do you have... you have what he wrote, right?
Yes.
Is this... is there something wrong with... please, is there something wrong with what the proposal?
No.
Okay, well, I mean, I... as far as a liaison, it's not a public body. You need to have a public body, and I believe in a public body. I believe there should be public meetings. This is not a... that's not a public... what you have now is not a public body, and I think that what we should have is a public body appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and you guys can come back to us. You already saw what was on there. I think that that's... there's nothing... nothing wrong with Josh, you, Jeff, Marsha, and, um, Cal, uh, working on that, and is that okay with you?
Um, it's okay with me, but again, um, this is a little different than what was discussed... what I discussed with the Coordinating Committee on Tuesday evening, so I haven't had a chance to confirm this with them.
Mr. Chairman.
So, it's changed a little.
Uh, I just think this is a good idea. This is, again, for everyone in Nahand, this is part of a process. I'm not gonna be slipping over myself over this one said that, this one said that. That's the worst thing that can happen to us as a group, and it's happening, because unfortunately, I walk my dog and I hear stuff, and it's not good, and we gotta... we've gotta hang together on this. This is part of my process. We've been banging it around for a while. We can't do it because we can't meet, but we've been banging around. I think this is a very good idea. I think if Mark can straighten it out with the town administrator, we can... he can let us know it, and that's fine with us. I think that's a good thing.
So, the motion's on the table. Would you wanna do?
I so...
All those in favor?
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye, so then we have a committee?
Yeah.
Uh, aye. Could I... I...
Well, you have, Jerry, you wrote... you wrote the provisions in it.
If I could wait... if what I'm... you're correct. I drafted an... Mark... first off, Mark and I have been communicating pretty thoroughly, and we have a lot of history, and I think he's done a lot for this town, so we got good history here, that's one thing, and I would be more than happy if the Board wants me to work with Mark or anybody. Actually, I would love to do it. However, if I'm hearing Mark correctly, even though... and you are correct, Mr. Chairman, I think for two or three days, there was a real strong interest in putting a committee together, as you indicated.
Yeah.
Uh, I think, kind of like at the 24th hour, and I'll be frank with you, Mr... Mark called me today, and I don't know if they're quite ready for that. They may be ready in a week or two. I think, if I'm hearing Mark, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think he's asking for a little more time before you formulate anything, but obviously, it's your decision whether you wanna go forward. Am I correct, Mark? You're looking for some more time?
Well, I wasn't prepared to discuss this tonight. I didn't know what was on the agenda. In fact, I was told it wasn't on the agenda, so I'm a little surprised about that, and I... you know, there are some nuances in what is being proposed here that the Coordinating Committee and I have not discussed, so I kind of would like the opportunity to discuss it with them first.
Why don't we table it? And we'll have a meeting next Thursday night, we'll give you time?
That'll be fine.
Is that good? Give you time? So, we'll have another meeting next Thursday night, so I gotta get some answers here myself tonight, because I'm kinda lost here. I... why don't we do... why don't we table this?
Well, can we hear... how about if we hear from the people that were chosen?
Sure.
You guys okay with it? Do you wanna... Josh, Cal?
Um, so, um, I certainly support the notion of the committee. I didn't know I was gonna be on the committee until tonight.[1607.64][1607.64](laughing) Uh, so, I think, for me personally, I'm happy to help, but, uh, I should find out what the commitment is and check with Alan and so on, but certainly support the notion of the committee.
All right, so next, we're gonna have a meeting, Cal? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think, uh, if there's any reticence at all, it's because I think the committee as a whole is not comfortable or understands completely the open meeting laws and the requirements around that, and that is something that we all need to get used to if we don't have experience with it. So, I think part of what, uh, what, uh, Mark... the reticence that Mark has is just making sure that everybody understands the limitations on the open meeting rules, because with a committee like this, we, as you point out, we're gonna have to comply with those. So, I think part of the way would be just making sure everybody understands what we can and can't do, um, what, uh, you know, we can and can't say, what it means, what the committee actually means to you, what the limitations are, and so on, so I think that's what, if I'm not mistaken, Mark, I think that's... that's part of what we're talking about, so.
Uh, and there was one... is Jeff Musman here?
Yes.
Oh, (laughing) boy, I'm sorry, I missed ya. Are you okay with it?
I'm, uh, I'm fine with the committee, and we are, you know, I think I speak for everyone in the room.
Yeah.
We are committed to working with you, committed to the end product here, and we're just trying to work through sort of logistics and making sure that we are, uh, you know, we do the right thing, so...
And you don't mind having open meetings, correct?
No, of course not. I've been involved in numerous committees where we've had open meetings, so...
Well, I... yeah, I mean, everybody should know what an open meeting... what the open meeting law is, so...
Right, right.
Well, there's Jeff and there's Mark, they certainly know.[1737.01][1737.01](laughing)
Christoph, what's...
Thank you very much. I just wanted to remind all of us, as we take a little bit of time to deliver what the mechanism of interaction is, that we heard you loud and clear. You wanna work with us, you wanna get the best input possible, and T, if I heard you correct, it shouldn't be hearsay, there has to be a mechanism by which results or input is communicated to the Board of Selectmen so that you have something that you can either support or not, but you have it officially in writing or otherwise, in some form that is really recognizable. So, I would just urge all of us to think carefully, and I heard these two gentlemen wanna do that on our behalf, what is the best mechanism to do that? Because I think what I'm hearing is what you want is certain formal input that will inform your decisions and your process, and whether that's a committee or an individual liaison person may be a matter of discussion. There are probably pros and cons to both.
And a five-member committee is...
And, and a five-member committee is very workable.
Absolutely. And, and again, you know, we're obviously, it would be your choice, um, to a degree. You know, if you appoint a committee, that's your committee. But I think we should just give Mark and Jerry and others a chance to deliberate what might be the best form to give our work products to you.
Correct. I agree, thank you. Now, there was a mention of money. I think Mr. Perry's looking for it.
I'm always looking for money. One step at a time.
Well, did you realize we have to have an appraisal done?
Yes.
So, and it has to go through the town. I wasn't finished speaking. How long you talking?
Yeah, well, you're on step five. We haven't, we haven't got to step one yet. This committee, I'm talking about the committee. We just got to feed them. I asked to table, table this, this motion.
Yeah.
Okay, to next Thursday night, so that the group...
We're going to rescind our vote, Richie. We have to do that first, because we voted on it.
Well, hold on.
So I'll make a motion, I'll annotate a motion that we rescind our vote on this committee until next Thursday night, where the, the board can come back to us and talk to us about it.
I'll work with Jerry.
Discussion.
I may discuss that. I don't agree with that. I agree with this being an important part of the process. Mark and Jerry can work it all out. I'm fine with there being a five-member board.
No, I understand that, but...
And, and, and the logistics of it, um, town administrator already sent out some logistics.
I, I understand that and I, I, that's what I want...
So I'm not in favor of tabling anything. It's out there.
Okay, so it's out there?
Tell me when I can talk.
Now, Mr. Lombard, you can speak on the motion.
I asked to table this because I'm not sure the five members you suggested, if they're, you know, they just walked into this meeting tonight and Josh said it the best. You know, I, I, I think it's a great meeting, but I'm not sure I was going to be, you know, I didn't know I was going to be on it. This gives the team, your team, time to discuss who's going to be on it or recommend to be on it. And you might get different people that say, listen, you know, to be, uh, different, you know, parts of the town, you know? Someone from Little Nahat. Break it up that way. They, it, it, it's a chance to discuss it and then go back next Thursday night and say, we recommend the following individuals. And then we'll appoint them there.
Okay, so the, the motion, the motion's to table, right?
Is that okay? Do you understand? Do you understand?
Of course I do.
Okay, you understand that?
And we put the motion out there to table it. All those in favor to table it?
No, I want more discussion.
Oh, go ahead.
The town administrator just advised me that I should table it. So, I'll table it. Mark and Jerry need more time.
Well, it's, it's, they, they...
But I still, I still wanted to be part of the process.
They've already stated that they don't want to, um, they want to wait, so I'm okay with it. We'll table until next, next, uh, we have a meeting next Thursday night.
Absolutely.
Okay. And we have to... Aye. All those in favor? Aye.
That was the motion to table.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, um, also, we need to have an executive session meeting next Thursday night also, Jerry, all right?
Um, for litigation or?
Yes. And I'll, and I'll give that to you later.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Mark.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, people. Good job.
Now, can we get an answer on this? You hired an attorney and attorney gave us a presentation, uh, a couple of weeks ago on eminent domain.
I didn't, what, what attorney?
The attorney that made the presentation to us, yeah.
That was their attorney.
Whose attorney?
That was their attorney. There's nothing, nothing going to be on the warrant about eminent domain, Richie. It was never, never put on the warrant.
We discussed either having a special town, did we not discuss having a special town meeting within the annual meeting?
That, that was an executive session. Did we accept those minutes yet?
Yes, you have.
Okay, so those are the minutes we accepted, so they're public now.
They can now be public.
We did. We, we, we were all over the place with it. We decided to do a lot of different things, but we, our attorney wasn't here.
Where is he tonight? Is he, did you invite him tonight?
Can't script?
Yeah.
No. Nope.
Why? We, we got to invite him to the meetings. I mean, he's a crucial part, you know?
Sure.
The legal team. So, that discussion that they came up with, their attorney, am I correct? I thought it was, okay.
And that's a, that's a, definitely a, a, so everybody knows that it's a definite, um, thought.
So...
But it's not on the warrant? It's too, it was too soon. We decided it was too soon.
Too soon for the...
We had no answers yet. We had no, we, you know, there was a lot of different things that we had to, there was a lot of questions that had to be asked. And I don't want to get into that right now. We shouldn't be getting into that right now.
Well, I do. I want to get involved in it.
Okay.
There was a process that he explained to us that we needed to go through, the appraised value and, and step by step.
That's right.
He uses it step by step. Instead of having, uh, a special town meeting within the annual meeting, we placed the article, the last article on the warrant so that we carry it over to have a, it's almost like having a special town meeting.
Chairman, I can help.
Yes, yeah.
If I could help refresh everyone's memory, you are correct in everything you said. And what we did, Richie, to refresh your memory, we posted a meeting for that subsequent Thursday night to consider opening the warrant for that last article. You're right about all that, but we never met. There was no meeting, there was no article that was provided from, um, and if I don't mind beating up Mark a little bit, I guess we, we talked a little bit about that stuff too. And it was decided that they weren't quite ready. So we didn't meet that Thursday night, we didn't open the warrant, there was no article for the, um, for the warrant that was voted.
I, I would ask that we table this right now and stop talking about, Richie, because...
Excuse me, excuse me. I, I, you can't shut me off.
I'm not going to shut you off, Richie.
Yes, you are. You're trying to shut me off.
I'm just telling you, I think it's a bad thing for us to talk about this right now.
No, no, I'm trying to explain something to you.
Okay.
We need to attack Northeastern from all fronts. And we need to do it right now. Hopefully, they'll get the message and withdraw this construction project.
Well, they're going to go Tuesday, right? Am I right? Is it Tuesday? You guys are going to, to, with the, with the letter to the president?
Yes.
So, I mean, that's, that, there's 1,600, this, 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 if you ask the town clerk, there's 2,500 registered voters in the heart. They've got 1,700 people on that, that petition.
Right.
That's a clear message. I mean, they did everything but get little kids to sign it.
And I would also suggest that in that packet, the Board of Selectmen draft a letter very similar to theirs.
Mr. Taylor already did that.
Put it in the packet. Make sure that the Board of Selectmen vote tonight, okay? That we draft the letter very similar to theirs and put it in that packet with it signed by all three members.
But we've already done that.
We've already, where, where have we done it?
We've already discussed that. We're going to, we're going to send the letter to Northeastern.
No, no, but we've got to draft it, just similar to theirs and sign it, all three of us.
Sure.
And it has to be done, when, when are you making the presentation?
Tuesday, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
It's coming Tuesday. So we've got to get it drafted tonight or tomorrow morning and come in here and sign it and make sure they have a copy of it for that presentation. Am I, am I...
Who wants to squat? Who wants to talk first?
Can I, can I talk first? Hi.
I guess you have, you are.
In order for us to deliver the information in the package that we want, we ask that you do work with us. So whether you get to it, get that letter to us by end of day tomorrow or the very latest time period over the weekend, we can work with the town administrator. We have a production schedule we want to get to and we need to get it packaged and ready and ready to deliver to a courier. So we don't want to, I don't want to get a note or call, you know, Saturday that you, it's not going to happen. So we need to hear from you that you are going to commit to this so we can work, work through it. If you're not, then we will deliver our package without the Board of Selectmen's letter.
Very good. Okay, that's, and that's fine. We can, we can deliver it with yours and, and we will. We're going to try. We can also mail it to them, we can also send it to them, uh, we can also call them. So, and we, we are going to get that to be all together. Can we, can we wrap that?
It should be all together, but we're not going to wait for you. That's our, I'm just telling you, we're not going to wait.
So it's Tuesday you're doing it?
No, no, we're not going to wait till Tuesday. We need it from you by end of day tomorrow.
End of the day tomorrow?
That's it.
Jerry, can we get Mary Ellen to draft the letter for us?
Um, in, in conversation with Mr. Taylor, he's crafted a draft, he's close.
Okay, T will, T will?
Uh, I can, I will come in tomorrow and work with T and try to put something together.
Okay.
Uh, you, are the three of you around town tomorrow?
I am.
I'm always in town.
All right, so...
Are you in tomorrow?
I guess I am now. But having said, no, I, believe me, I get it. I'm coming in. I know. Um, how about T and I, I'll come in first thing? How about we get together, we'll, we'll get it done?
All right, we'll sign it.
Simple as that. We'll get it done.
We'll get it to you, Michelle?
Can, can we back up a little bit? I just, I just want to refresh some people's memory. Uh, last week when we met, I think it was last week, um, yes, we brought our attorney with us.
Right.
The attorney that you had selected was, she had an issue and, and was not able to attend. And I thought you guys were going to meet either the next day or shortly thereafter with her and get her input into what we had talked about at the meeting. And I have not, nobody, I don't think has any heard, has heard anything about what she had, had thought or what her input was, if there was anything.
What's your, what's your email? I'll send it to you.
Okay, that'd be great.
I'll send it to Mark.
Send it to Mark. That'd be great.
Michelle? I have his, I have his email and he can, he can generate, he can send it to you, to all of you.
Michelle, what time do you have to have that in your, in your hands?
I'd like to see it by 5:00 o'clock.
5:00?
Yep. And I gave Jerry my contact information so we can work for it.
And you'll be in the heart?
I'm in the heart all day.
Okay.
Who's recording secretary?
See, you're going to draft the letter.
We're going to get it done.
You're going to draft the letter.
Do we have a copy?
Call me, I'll come up and sign it.
Do we have a copy of your letter?
Yes, we can give you a copy of it.
No, he wants it, Richie, T wants to do it. Let him, let him, let him do it.
No, I, I don't need it. Just give, give the copy to T. So T, just, and Jerry, all right?
We'll take care of it, I promise.
Okay, and then we just need to sign it.
Yep.
Okay?
We'll take care of it.
I already have a copy of it, so.
So I think a total packet?
I have a copy of that.
And a vote for Mark.
I have a copy of every one.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion that we, we, uh, we execute that letter and do have the letter, uh, in the hands of, uh, Michelle by 5:00 P.M.
We'll have it...
I would say move it up by four. I so moved that.
We'll have it toward by noon.
That's fine.
I just have to find it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It'll be done.
Okay.
I'm not going to be, I'm not being put on a timeframe. It'll be done when it's done.
Okay.
I'm voting no on that.
All right, so it'll be done. You'll have it by 5:00?
It will get done, I promise.
Also, if I may?
Go ahead.
Since we're all being up front here, uh, in this executive session, at one point I looked up and there were five people talking about nothing else but themselves. So I just said, it's three hours, I want to go home. So that's probably why a lot of things didn't get done, you know? So a group of five for you people is perfect. And, and I, I didn't violate anything because I didn't say what was said.
Okay.
I'm done.
So we're done with all that. Next on the agenda is the administrator's report.
Wait, 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 wait. Is any, is there anything else you want to meet with the board about?
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
The administrator's report. I'll say it again. I'll be in touch with it, okay?
Sorry, Diane, I had to, I had to say it.
Want to wait a minute or?
Let, let them leave.
Wait, they leave, okay. Maybe take a five-minute recess or something, Mr.?
Sure. Five-minute recess.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay, so, I am gonna, um, do you want to go to the administrator's report?
Whatever your pleasures, Mr. Chairman. If you want to take someone else out of it, go right ahead.
Yeah.
I, I have a lengthy report, so.
Under new business, the proclamation for Arbor Day, and we have Bi Paddock here, who's, would you, do you want to read it, or do you want me to read it?
No. Well, you can, you can read it. I just thought I'd say a word about it.
Sure, I got it, I got it.
Yeah, so, seems kind of like a silly thing to have to say, "Yes, it's Arbor Day." But, kind of down the road, what SWIM would really like to do is make this a Tree City USA. And if we do make Nahat a Tree City USA, you get money into the DPW for planting and caring for trees. If, if by some chance, we decide, you all decide, that you want to become a Tree City USA, it would go on to the warrant for 2019. But it can't go on the warrant for 2019 unless you declare Arbor Day today, you know, this month. That's all it is. And if you decide never to do it, it doesn't matter, but it's really great you declared it's Arbor Day. So there are no strings attached. That's it.
Okay.
And, and as vice chairman, I should be second on the list, not Richard Lombard.
That's all.
Sarcasm.
Well, I've been putting up with it for two years, so I just thought I'd put it right. Francis Burrell, then the vice chairman, and then the recording secretary.
So in 1872, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean air, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for the wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable source of giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, we, Francis J. Burrell, Richard Lombard, and Chesley Taylor, Board of Selectmen, do hereby proclaim, proclaim April 27, 2018 as Arbor Day in the town of Nahat, and we urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden Nahat and promote the well-being of this and future generations dated this fifth day of April 2018.
So moved?
Okay. Do I have a second, Ron?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Discussion?
Discussion, sure.
I think what we need to do, I, I'm just, I'm not sure we have time this year to do it, because we've got very little public works people, but I think what we need to do is have someone, um, serve up, um, the cost of, say, a willow tree.
Which?
A willow, another tree, and then find out where we should plant these and post it so that people can donate money to, to you, and, and all the public works to plant trees. Willow would cost, say, a hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And they can donate a hundred, and we can buy these all at once, say, six months from now, or plan for next year. So we have a plan, and there's a lot of trees down around the town, and where we need to put them, and what kind of tree that would go there.
Well, we kind of have that now, because SWIM has a tree program. People write checks to SWIM saying, "This is for trees." So last year, last summer, we planted four trees in, um, Marjoram Park.
Right.
Um, and the town planted them, but SWIM paid for them. And so this year, since there's difficulty planting in town property, we're giving away trees, you know, we hope to give away many, many trees to residents to plant in their own yards. But definitely, SWIM can be used that way because we're a nonprofit, so people can give money to SWIM, we give the tree to DPW and they plant it. It's, it's in place. The, um, Tree City USA, I think it's each person of each household gives two dollars a year. That goes into a bucket straight to the DPW for buying trees. And, you know, it's really expensive when they have to take them down, or you have to hire somebody to take these dangerous trees down that have got to come down. So we, we do have that pretty much in place right now.
Really? I, I, okay.
Yeah, so if the town is, is, it's just really hard for the DPW to set aside the time and the labor to plant these trees. So kind of need a program. That's what I'm hoping to start.
When is, April 27th is what the, is it a weekend?
Is it the 27th or the 22nd?
27th.
27th, um.
Is it Arbor Day? It's, it's?
Uh, it's, that's the day before town meeting, so it's Friday.
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 Mm-hmm.
That's right, okay. We should plan a, um, a weekend where the whole town could plant trees.
Yeah, well, I think that'd be fantastic. SWIM would be behind.
And that would relieve the DPW. You guys can coordinate where you think they should go.
Yeah.
And, um.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah. I mean, and that's the easiest way to do it, and get the kids involved, show them how to plant a tree, you know?
Yep, yep. Well, you know Diana Brandy and her junior gardeners, she's requested, um, I guess about 40 trees to plant in the lowlands through SWIM.
Yep.
And we'd get these trees from the National Arbor Day Foundation for between eight and 20 dollars each. They're bare root planting trees. Um, and, uh, we're gonna, I'm planning to give her the money, even though I have a donor, I don't know if you, any of you knew Mel Kaplan, who went to the junior high here, graduated in the 70s, wants to donate in the name of a couple that grew up in Nahat, um, so that SWIM would pay for the trees for Diana to plant in the lowlands. So we're good to go.
So you guys coordinate all that? With that, yeah, with us, and we'll, we'll?
We're totally coordinated on that one.
Because I love planting trees myself, so I'll, I'll, I'll work with them.
Yeah, I think she's planning to plant on April 25th. So why don't I send you some information about that? That would be a good day. We could celebrate the day. The kids are all lined up to go out and plant.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I'll, I'll send you that information.
All right, all those in favor?
We did, aye.
Aye. No, Richie wanted to discuss. Aye, okay.
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen. Have a nice, nice evening altogether.
So, Jerry.
Yes, sir.
Administrator's report.
Let's do this so Jerry can then be done and we can go. I have a couple more things I want to talk about.
We have, we have some, I, I need some signatures too before we leave, so we have some work to do here.
Yeah.
Okay. What, what is your pleasure, Mr.?
No, you want me to take a, okay.
Sorry, Josh. Could I first ask, you've already voted this, but they're requesting, you see this, if you'd all just sign that, pass that down, that would be the first thing I'd ask you to do. Um, it's, it's the minutes you've already approved.
Minutes, Richie signed it.
All right. If you, all three of you need to, oh, I don't know, is it one?
Richie does.
Richie does that, okay.
Recording secretary does.
The second thing I would ask the board to do, I have here seven copies that have to be posted around the town.
Yep.
Of the warrant. If I could ask all of you to sign that, that would be consistent with our, uh, minute, our, our agenda. And while you're doing that, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, to try to expedite things, I can give you my report of activities going on.
Yeah, I would love that, yeah.
Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we have been pretty busy since I came aboard a couple weeks ago, so I want to brief the board on a whole bunch of things. I've tried hard to communicate with all three of you off, you know, individually from time to time, but let me work my way through this. A couple weeks ago, as you're probably aware of the fact, we had FEMA and MEMR in here. We went around the town, we looked at all the damage. To date, we have approximately 1.5 million dollars of damage as reported, that we've reported to FEMA. That is to help with what they call the declaration. Um, I'm comfortable that the county and the Commonwealth will get enough over the threshold to warrant reimbursement from, uh, this, from the state, I'm sorry, from the federal government. Um, I will inform you that what we plan on doing with this is to be borrowing the 1.5 million until we get reimbursement within the next year or two. I've made arrangements already with our financial advisor, I was on the phone with him today. I'll be meeting with him in, in May to get going on that so we don't have deficits at the close of the fiscal year. So we're moving forward on that. I have completed a first round of union negotiations with the police, fire, and public works. Uh, this is my first experience at this, but I want to say, if, and I hope they may listen to me, I had an excellent discussion with all three unions. Uh, I actually enjoyed it. I learned quite a bit. Um, we have discussed issues, and I'm awaiting back to hear from the individual unions as to potential contract negotiations going forward. But it was very well-received, and I want to publicly thank all the three union members for the way they treated me and for what they taught me in the process. Uh, we have a meeting on, next Tuesday on, um, April 10th. It'll be the first meeting of the Town Administrator Search Committee. Um, we, as I forwarded to you, you saw a draft proposal of the, uh, of the ad that's going to go out. It has been forwarded to the committee members. I will personally be visiting with them at 7:00 o'clock, working with them to coordinate a few things, and then obviously let them do their jobs. So that is in progress and things are going well. Last Monday, um, and I discussed with a few of you, we have posted a public works director/town engineer position. It's in MMA. Um, we have, I have included in the town warrant, which you may have seen, a new classification for town engineer, uh, which the finance committee agreed with, and I want to publicly thank them if they're listening to this. So we have a combined job. I have been dealing with free consulting, I like that terminology, that I want to give him a shout-out, not that he's going to pay attention to this, but the director of public works in the city of Beverly, by the name of Mike Collins, who's a, a good friend of mine, I've been working with in my other capacity here, has been advising me a little bit on how to proceed with salaries and how to look for engineers and things of that nature. He's also going to try to spread the word, and he said he assists the town in any capacity he could help us, uh, again, free of charge for services. So I'm optimistic with the ad we put out. I'm hopeful we can get an engineer. I think as we've discussed individually, we're spending quite a bit of money on engineering services. My goal is to try to save the taxpayers' money, and I'm hopeful in this. If we do not, if we are not successful in getting some candidates in the next two to three weeks, that we have a month, um, for the posting, but I also left it to, it's open until filled, so we can still go back and visit it. Um, I am considering putting in an ad for the American Public Works Association. I was told by Mr. Collins in Beverly that that may be a good place to go, where you're going to get a lot of the, uh, engineers look at that stuff. And, uh, I don't want to pay the money for it if we get some good, uh, ad, you know, responses but, from MMA, but if we don't, I'm considering doing that. I just got to find the money. It's a little tight right now. So that's it. You have the warrant before you. Uh, the, uh, the warrant is completed, and I thank you for those signatures there for everybody. If all three of you signed the warrant, uh, the budget is balanced. The finance committee has finished their work. They've made their recommendations, see the pro or con. We have gone to the printer, and, uh, we will be ready for town meeting. And there's a few things we have to do, but in general, the, the staff really scrambled in the last, my first two weeks, but, uh, there was a little lull in activity here during the transition phase, but, uh, the staff really stepped up. I publicly thanked them. They really did a great job. The Worf project, I, I had the opportunity to meet with Vicky Masson, the engineer. Uh, she's, uh, giving me a report on a, a host of issues, but as far as the Worf goes, she has informed me as of, uh, two, Monday, I think it was, um, that the project is on time. They anticipated it being done on April 15th. So she informs me, it's a, as you, as you know, but I'm learning as I come along here, $600,000 project. We will, we've received $320,000 in reimbursements for that. We'll get about another 90 to offset that, and, uh, it's supposed to be done. So I'm hopeful that that will occur. With regard to the Fort Ruckman, um, issue, I've been in touch with EnviroTech. I signed a contract for $6,000. We're looking pretty positive up there. Um, as I understand it, the, um, uh, the, the findings on the mess hall, uh, the lead in the car, hydrocarbons on Bailey's sale are okay, but we need a little additional testing on soil. We're working on that. I'm optimistic we're going to be okay on that. So we are on top of that on the Fort Ruckman issue. With regard to Kelly Greens, I talked to Selectman Lombard a little bit about this. As you know, they get hit pretty hard down there, and Richie was right. The, uh, the sheriff came down to help clean up, did a great job. We had problems with the building down there. Uh, we are working on it. The public health official went down there. We were able to keep the building open, which I was pleased about. They're working on some wall issues, and it's repaired, and we are good to go, I think, there. But I, again, I'm glad we were able to keep the building open. Um, in talking with Vicky Masson, she's advised me, the drainage of the, um, the, the ditches, if you will, through the golf course for the mosquito control, because of the timing of the, uh, golf course is supposed to open today, though it's cold as hell, but, um, she's advising, we wait till fall to deal with the, the mosquito control, and so I suggested we do that. Um, with regard to the Forty Stouts revetment, I know, um, Enzo and I have talked quite a bit about that. Um, we're gonna, there is some damage up there that may be FEMA, FEMA reimbursement here. I know there are other issues above and beyond that. So we're working on that issue to see if we can work that out. I, I don't want to say too much on that, but just to let you know, it's, it's something we're working on. The, uh, community preservation, uh, projects, I can tell you that the chapel doors, I'm told, will be installed by, should be installed either today or tomorrow, and, and finished on that. The repair, uh, the town hall arches, the repairs are done. On the architectural assessments for the town hall, the library, Ellingwood is all done, and, uh, we're going to include that in future capital improvement planning here as well. Uh, finally, I will get a report on April 16th regarding the ADA assessment of the town hall. We're working on that as well. I am very happy to report, um, the ambulance is back and the police, uh, down the firehouse. Uh, I want to commend Chief Feinberg for this. He and I had a very frank dialogue about dealing with the vendor. Uh, I gave him some arching orders, and I really appreciate the chief got pretty firm with the vendor there. And, uh, it's funny, I guess, when you do things a little differently, I can tell you within a week, they got the job done. It's, I personally got in the ambulance and looked at it myself. So I'm very happy to report to the townspeople. We have the ambulance down there, and I'm, I'm very pleased about that. I know Mr. Taylor talked about the, the mile per hour signs on the Hart Road. I'm informed in working with the public works and the, and the police chief, they've already got the, where they want to put them. And hopefully, weather permitting, and if nothing else happen, happens crazy, my, uh, the hope is to have something up by the end of this month. And we'll work on the, and if not, I will get all over that.
Thank you.
I'm going to have my first, uh, department head meeting Tuesday night, and it's probably more for me than them, but we're going to be doing that and, and working with the staff. Um, we transferred, um, uh, the finance committee a week ago, $25,000 to deal with sick time at the fire station. Uh, the finance committee has approximately $80,000 in the vicinity of, um, money in the reserve fund here. Um, I have to inform you that we are using all the free cash. We use $150,000 of overlay to balance next year's budget as well as to close the books this year. We have enough, unless something pops up, I don't know about. But I need to inform the board, other than money in the reserve fund, there is no more funds left anywhere for just about anything. So we're pretty tight. I'm putting the clamps down on the budget, so I hope you'll consider that if you're looking for something between now and the end of fiscal year. The only place we really can go is the reserve fund in the, um, finance committee. Um, and finally, uh, both Chief Feinberg and Chief Dwyer are, are going to meet next Thursday with the Lynn Fire Chief regarding our, uh, we have a contract with them for the dispatch. So, uh, we're trying to work out a favorable, uh, agreement, uh, financially with the town. They have their instructions in that area, and I'm hopeful we'll get that consummated, and if we're lucky, we'll break even, but I don't want to tip my hand here too much.
You have been busy.
Pardon me?
You have been busy.
Thank you, Mr. Lombard. I, I, I will be frank with you. Um, yeah, I mean, it, it's been a little challenging. I, I have to admit, I've enjoyed most of it, and some of it I haven't enjoyed, but, uh, but I've really enjoyed my two weeks here. And I obviously would be here a lot longer. Um, I've really enjoyed meeting some old friends I haven't seen in 40 years, meeting some new friends. Um, I've really enjoyed interacting with all of you, though we don't always agree on everything, but I'm doing my best to get there. But the biggest goal I had in my first two to three weeks here was to get us ready for town meeting. I'm here to report, we're ready, we're gonna go, and a lot of it had to do with the staff here in this town hall. I want to publicly thank them for that. Mr. Chairman, that's what I have for a report for you this evening.
Oh, that's it? That's all you have? Okay, thank you.
I'm hoping that's enough.
No, it, it is. You, you've been very busy.
Question?
Sure, go ahead, Richie.
Are you going to make sure the super, well, there's, uh, Timmy Low, they have the plants and flowers in here for the annual meeting?
Um, I, I wasn't aware that. I'll, I'll put it on my list.
They, they usually put a nice, you know?
I, I will take care of that.
Yeah, they, they usually rent them from, uh?
And the other thing, Jerry, potholes?
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Richie?
Some major potholes around the town in the main, in main drag.
Okay, I, uh?
They could schedule it, I mean, with a couple weeks, and we don't?
Yeah, I, uh, Tim will be in with my department meeting Tuesday. I'll bring that up.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Um, I had brought up, um, I called up the, the town hall, oh, maybe a couple weeks ago. I talked to Mary about, uh, telephone pole at the top of, I think it's Hillcrest or Harborview.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with this.
It's pole number eight.
On Hillcrest or Harborview?
It's, um, I think it's Harborview.
Pole number eight? I, I have no.
It's pole number eight, Verizon, uh, the, the telephone company owns it. There's been chunks taken out of it, big chunks taken out of it, and it's going to come down. It's, it's like someone took a hatchet to it. It's the trash truck keeps hitting it. It's, it's where Patty Magna lives, in, in the Magna Girls. Is that?
They live on Kobe Way, I thought.
No, at the top, the, it's Hill, it's very top of that.
Spiny path?
I get it confused with Harborview and Hillcrest.
Well, Harborview is down by?
Harborview is down by Castle Road.
Okay, so that's Hillcrest then.
Hillcrest.
Hillcrest. It's off of Hillcrest where, uh?
Charlie Kelly used to work? Live?
No.
Hillcrest is off Harborview, I thought. The little dead end there.
It's a dead end.
Magna's live up on?
Breezy Hill.
Breezy Hill.
You're killing me here tonight.
Breezy Hills, pole number eight.
Breezy Hill Terrace?
It's, yes, breezy, it's, it's going to come down.
All right, I'm scratching things out here.
It's that hill, uh, Jerry, there's a hill.
I'm familiar with it.
Right street and stuff, I'm telling tomorrow, so we can go out and meet.
All right, you're telling me it's pole number eight?
Yes.
I will look into it, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, okay. The other thing is, I want to have a public, uh, meeting with, um, the people that have been affected by the storm. A lot of people don't understand how their flood insurance works, their seawalls and all that. So I want to get the MEMR, probably Dennis, and, um, and we could, the FEMA committee can do this. My committee.
Uh, you'll take care of it then?
Sure, I can take care of it. But I want people to know that we're going to, we're going to do that.
You're going to try, okay.
So to get, you know, so people understand how to go about getting their seawalls fixed and?
Okay. You'll, if you could?
Damage reports.
Whatever I could do to help in that, by all means.
Because there, uh, I think a lot of people are just confused about it.
Okay.
And, um, I'm going to see if I can get ahold of Mike Haley. He's, I think he's the MEMR guy, and?
Okay.
And, um, uh, and Dennis. I think I can get them to come.
Okay.
Very informal meeting, so people can come, and I'm going to see if I can get a couple of insurance people to come and, and speak. Very informal meeting so people can come and I'm gonna see if I can get a couple of insurance people to come and speak on it.
Whatever I could do to help you on that, by all means.
I have a question concerning that.
Sure.
A lot of people have asked me how, what's the procedure, the process?
Right.
To increase the height of the.
Seawall?
Seawall. Like, we should be thinking about that on Tudor Beach when we.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I just, I don't know, I don't know how they go about doing that.
Well, we can, we can cover that, but it's basically when they, like, there's a seawall that came down on Castle Road. I think it was Danny Dills. He can raise that. He's gonna have to put in for, uh, uh, order conditions.
Right.
And, and he'll have to raise it, I mean. I, I'm gonna say in the next thirty years, our causeway is gonna be underwater. So I have a real, I got a feeling that's gonna happen. So I think that raising the seawalls, especially on Tudor Beach, anchoring that a little bit better is a, is a real, real issue. We need to, we need to take care of that. So we'll have a meeting and I'll see if I can get the ConCon to come to it also.
Now, all these repairs that he's.
Yeah.
The million, the damage of storms.
Uh, yeah, I'm all over that, yes.
So we'll, we'll hopefully get reimbursed?
What I can report to you, yes. The answer is hopefully yes. I might, yeah, I think so. It's, the, the challenge is this, it, we should get seventy-five percent reimbursement from FEMA if we get over the declaration. But the declaration's a countywide thing, it's not just us. But I think we're gonna get there and talking to the FEMA people. The state used to give twelve and a half percent above beyond that back in the day when I was working in Boston. Uh, they no longer do that. So when, if we're at one point five million, but it could even grow from there, we're only gonna get seventy-five percent. So the town ultimately will be on the hook for around three fifty. And we're gonna have to figure out a strategy, but that won't come to fruition until probably a year from now, until we shake out everything, so.
And we need to, and we need to, we need to get more involved in that because we need to put more on it. Because we need to take care of Castle Road. Seawalls on Castle Road.
The, what?
We need to, we need to start armoring.
Just so you know, we've been very aggressive in our reporting to FEMA, I promise you that. However, we ha, we can, FEMA will only reimburse things that have been damaged.
I know.
So we have to, we can't just like, 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 we couldn't build four more feet at Tudor Beach as an example. They're just not gonna reimburse us and we're on the hook for a hundred percent of that. So we have to be careful. If there's something we've missed, by all means, give it to me, I'll review it. If you got something, I'll take it, I'll look at it and.
Well, this is from Abby Nelson from Parrot Road. This is the pictures of, they were aware of Parrot Road.
I, oh, yeah, we, we, they're on the list.
We need to be more aggressive with, um.
I got it.
With, we need to be more aggressive with, if we're, if we're gonna build a wall, get reimbursed for Tudor Beach, the wall down there, at the, while they're building it, we need to go up. And it's not gonna cost us that much more.
I can, uh, I, I ca, a little caution on engineering costs. We're not, I don't know when we're gonna get to that, though we already started to work with the engineers to repair some of the stuff. I will certainly talk to the engineer on that, but I, again, I caution you on money. Um, I, everyone agrees they want to build a wall, that's the easy part. The money part is in the debt ratios and everything else associated with that, it gets a little complicated. If we do more than repair, we can only get reimbursed to repair what we, we lost, that's it.
But.
But while we're repairing, if we went up one, one, you know, one layer of rock?
I will get a cost estimate on that, but that will require probably an appropriation because it's above and beyond the reimbursements.
I think we have to look at all that.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree.
And also on Castle Road.
Yep. Down by Harborview area, you mean? Yep.
There's a seawall we need to build because the harbor has never come over like that before.
Yeah.
Well, during seventy-eight it did.
Okay, oh, yeah.
But we, we need to probably build a new seawall down there. Just saying, you should put all this in, in the, uh, Fola. And, uh, so that we take care of the Castle Road, Foxhill Road, White Way, you know, that, all that area down there. Because, and then on the other side by the ocean, Shot Beach, we gotta rebuild those dunes up a little higher. Do something, I don't know how we do that, but make it like on the entrance coming into town on the right-hand side by Doggy Beach.
Yep.
Those sand dunes are huge.
Well, uh.
They should be.
Yeah, they should be.
No, but they're going up big and that's.
I know there's conservation commission issues with that too.
Real simple, here's a real simple solution to all that.
Yeah.
All we have to do is a snow fence. You just do a snow fence project, have the kids get involved in it. You put, in the winter time, you put up snow fence along Shot Beach where the dune is gonna be. That snow fence collects all the sand. Then you pull it out.
That's true.
And everything grows in it. Then the next year you do the same thing and that's, that's how you create a dune. And these are just simple things that don't cost us anything.
Yeah, I think that's a heck of an idea. Let me, on the Tuesday meeting, I will talk to, uh, I think it's more of a winter project, I think you're right. But if we put, I think you, that's a great idea, actually.
Oh, it is. It's, and the other thing that we're gonna do is, I, I told you, we're gonna, we're, and I'm gonna incorporate, because all this is starting to meld together now, the, the FEMA committee, the, uh, green communities and this mass, uh, the municipal vulnerability program with the state, we'll get grant money for that. You know, showing our open space and all, it's, it's all gonna meld together. So we're gonna probably use the green community committee. Plus a few other people on the, for this municipal vulnerability committee. Abby Swaim, who was really, and we have some really talented people in the heart, I gotta tell you that. I mean, I, I can't believe some of the people that, that are on these committees with me. And they're just.
I, uh.
Wow, you know, we, we're lucky we have them, so.
Obviously, well, you and I talk almost daily, so, um, I, I'm hoping you give me a little latitude to the end of the month to get through town meeting. Then I know things are gonna free up a little bit for me and then we can kinda get it more aggressive on a lot of these issues.
All right.
But yeah, I, I'm hearing it. I'm almost out of a long page here of my to-dos. But, uh, I, I promise, I'm writing it down and we're gonna get at it.
We, we need to invite Seth Maltin over here to have him look at the construction of the town that was done here, the pitches.
Okay.
Because they're rebuilding from, well, all the way up to Maine, breakwaters. And they're putting breakwaters in New Jersey as a stretch and they got the money. We need to put some breakwaters at Tudor Beach to break that and the Coast Guard Beach.
You know, I, you've, yeah.
Very summer, now I know this is, this is, we knew it, we need the vehicle, our engineer, someone to write up the grant for breakwaters for these areas so that we hopefully stop this tidal surge.
Yeah.
Especially at Shot Beach and, and then Tudor Beach. Those two areas are the ones that are causing the most damage.
I've been wrestling strictly, I apologize, I think money all the time, it's just the way I'm in bread.
Oh, no, no, Jerry.
But you raised it and Richie raised a really interesting thing. I, I think that maybe if we can reach out to the congressman's office and get us the three of you in the room, I don't know, I haven't figured that. But I never thought of that to this moment and I, I put it down when you wrote it down. I don't have the money for your breakwater, but I think we should reach out in some capacity to try to have a conversation.
If in the back of your mind.
Absolutely.
Winthrop.
Yeah, I'm familiar, yeah.
You look at going down the Winthrop, they put breakwaters.
Yeah, I know.
And it prevents the tidal surge.
I saw it, yeah.
On that area. And I'm just thinking, if we can get a federal grant, okay?
Yep.
For that money, I mean, because it's gonna cost millions of dollars.
Lot of money.
But, but the government is spending that money. Because they'd rather build the, you know, these, these, these barriers to prevent the damage, okay?
Let me see if I can reach out to congress, let me see if I can put something together and talk. That's probably a good first step.
We should bring them over here for meetings, like my meetings.
Let me see what I can do, okay.
Get our new state senator here.
Yeah, I haven't reached out to him myself yet. I've just been busy, but I hope to meet him.
We're gonna leave him alone, so.
Okay.
Brendan's birthday is, uh, today. How do you know that? I can't tell you.
I went to high school with his father.
Brendan, why? Brendan, why?
Mr. Chairman, I, I have nothing more to report.
So, uh, okay, if I may talk now, since you two have talked for a while.
Yep.
You keep saying that.
Well, because you guys never stop talking sometimes. Right? I mean, never mind, I want to ask Jerry.
I, I work for all three of you.
Listen Richie, you ready? I agree a hundred percent with Richie. I want to see that seawall at Tudor Beach become imperative for us. Because, uh, as I go into work to Salem State, when I go along the Lineway going up, they actually have the seawall lifted up two feet with a vent fence over it. And you know what? It doesn't look that bad. It doesn't look half bad. So if we can raise Tudor Beach wall up.
And we don't need a big fence.
Then we don't need a huge fence.
Do you know the height, height of that fence they put down and shut, yeah?
And also down by that ramp, that needs immediate attention.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And if, if, if I could ask, not that you put it on your list, sir, but they, they had talked about, um, a pipe that went under with a clapper valve that was broken. Have you looked at that down at, um?
Foxhill?
No, Tudor Beach on the right side, down by Cattigan's House, Summer Street Court and.
I'm not familiar with that, but.
Oh, they had sent a letter to us.
All right, I, I haven't, all right, so what is he looking for?
DPW if they're going to clean it out and fix the clapper valve. That would help immensely down there with those people. Two of the neighbors, if I may, wait. Two of the neighbors used to go down into the hole and try to get the seaweed out of it and fix them themselves.
Thank you for, uh, they went down there a week ago and it's my understanding that they did clean it out. I asked Tim to talk to, and I apologize, Dave, is this the gentleman who came here a couple of weeks ago?
Give it up, Albridge.
Thank you. Um, and then he came in, I spent almost an hour with him.
Oh, terrific, you're on top of it. Thank you.
So, uh, but I will double check with DPW to make sure it's done, okay?
There's two clapper valves. One there at the end of Tudor Beach.
Okay.
And they can blow it out with the sewer ejector pump.
Okay.
They blow it out. The other one is down at, um, uh, it, it empties out the, uh, Bird Sanctuary.
Okay.
And it's, um, you know where Dave Connell lives?
No.
It's the la, there's a little beach going up.
I know what you mean, I know the area you mean, there's a lot of rocky area, right.
Right, the fence there, there's, that pipe is either smashed, it needs a new pipe or unplugged. And that's why the drainage is backed up and on that, uh.
I'll, uh.
Bird Sanctuary.
Let me, I'll put it on, it's on the list. Again, I have to be, I have to be upfront though, the money part of a lot of this stuff we got, you know, if we could do work from the public works, that's the easy part.
Well, this is the public works if they take.
Right, but if there's busted pipes, that's a different conversation and.
Those are, but they can find that out.
Yes, I agree with that.
Simple fixes, the clapper valves.
Yep.
I think that vulnerability, vulnerability program, I think that we can probably permit and dedicate pumps, uh, pump down at, uh.
Foxhill.
Foxhill Road, Tudor Beach, where all those clapper valves are and on Joe, it's Joe Beach, uh.
You need the engineers to figure out.
That's right, and, and, and that's right, we can, this is all resilience to the, this is all climate change stuff, so.
After the meeting, the owner came up to me and said to me, I don't want a pump, you know, that, you know, it's gonna be going, um, it was on my property and it was going all night.
Yeah.
And he didn't mind it this time, but that pump's gonna be put below ground.
Yeah, yeah, a dedicated pump.
Yeah.
And they should have one down at Foxhill Road.
Yes.
And they should have one, uh, all the, those are the three lowest pot portions in the heart. And, and, and of course, the golf course already has them. Um, and we should have dedicated pumps there and just be done with it. And that can all be, that can all be grant money.
You, you clean out those ditches?
Yeah.
And, and, and it's, all it is, you, you put a grader in there, it's a long arm that reaches the, and pulls the stuff out. And you take the, you take the, the material out of the, you know, appointment.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't leave it there.
Yeah.
They take it out of a truck.
Yeah.
And they just do it all the way down from Ward Road all the way to, uh, the back of Kelly.
The main thing is, we have to get this done.
Yes.
Yes, that's right. It's most important it gets done.
That's right. And follow up.
And follow up.
Right, exactly.
All right, I move.
Two more things.
Order, select and vote to approve a historical society, Ellingwood Chapel Concert, four fourteen eighteen at eight P M.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, uh, closing announcement would be, the compost area will be open on Wednesday and Saturday, starting Saturday, April seventh. Two thousand eighteen hours of operation will be nine to three P M, nine A M to three P M, brush and leaves only. It is very important that we have a discussion on the compost area. We need to put that on the agenda. We are gonna be in violation, a huge violation because it's out of control.
I have, I don't think tonight's the night to talk about it, but I have received documentation about that and I agree, we have to talk about that.
Yes.
I don't have a solution right now.
Either we, we have to have it ground up, we have to have a better system down there because people aren't gonna buy that stuff because it's, there's too much junk mixed in with it.
Yeah.
We get rid of it somehow. Well, we can, we should talk about it down the road because.
Yes.